Has gone through and determined how many mills it would cost to do each plan. It's a agreement kind of weighing, you know, public safety with the cost. I think it's important to kind of go through that amount if your commissioners agree with that and maybe have a discussion as to number safely ran. Commissioner Ratliff.
Can I first just spit out these last three real ones?
Oh, sure, absolutely. I'll just say that. Help me to get them back.
And then we're done. So other options, these are ones that we didn't, that I know is out there, yes. You got it, bro. Oh, sorry.
I'm just trying to think of what it's actually, because when you said that you spent $10,000 worth of just shift bidding last month, and that is with you not taking call, because that's how much call you take, and you're saying you're not going to take that call anymore because you're going to be out in the country. So we're basically looking at a projected future of potentially $10,000 a month of shift bidding.
Right.
Correct?
And that's what's interesting about option A. It's what else is about that?
So versus, okay, so that's what my main question was, is if we go to shift bidding pretty consistently, is one of these going to be cheaper than just throwing the shifts out there to the highest or to the lowest bidder? Whereas will option A effectively cover your call so that the shift bidding isn't really out there? Or do you really need option B to cover all of those on-call shifts? Or, I mean, because that concerns me. Like, I don't know, it's just kind of a blank check when you throw the shifts out there for bidding.
Right, right. It's very hard to budget. But like we've discussed, it hasn't been an issue really so far for us in the pay-out margin. You know, two or three shifts a bid, or two or three shift bids a month really is built into my budget. But yeah, when I go off a call, you're right, that's the issue.
So and that's, so what is happening, correct?
Right.
And pretty much every month from now on is going to look a lot like March?
Starting in June, yeah.
Okay.
But with you not being on-call, you'll be able to be the instructor to be able to have more?
Right, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm doing to replace that time is to be capable of that.
In other words, you had another paid position?
A position enough to cover the call.
So I wasn't going to replace you, you moved up.
No, they're just replacing my call.
He's doing the same.
I'm still the director. Most, most directors around the region don't have a full-time on-call job plus their directorship. This was a little bit unique because, I'll be honest, I wanted to prove out, prove what we could do with a volunteer EMS service. So the last two years, I put my all into it every single minute to try to generate some numbers to see what we can do on our own. And now, yes, we are moving out to the country, so I won't be able to take that call legally. But that's the part of my job or replacement is to on-call.
So after you did that to yourself, how's your health?
Let's not talk about that.
I like to talk about that.
Yeah, don't let her.
Because I'm not letting it happen anymore.
Just to verify, I mean, I can't, just to verify, not only because you're moving out to the farm is why you're not taking call, but you're not taking call so you can become an instructor, right? It's not just for your own personal benefit?
Right, I mean, that's, that's-
Is that way to help?
I figured, I figured, here's my paycheck, and I don't have a job as a surgeon today, so it's a little hard to tell what my responsibilities really are. But if I take some of that away, to, to maintain that amount of pay, you need to replace it with something. And for health reasons, being an instructor is a lot better for me than being on-call.
And being an instructor is a lot better for the community, so you can actually have more.
And I have, I've, I've taught at two community colleges back in the day before, so I do have some experience.
But if we're going to move away from a volunteer organization, what's, isn't, wasn't the benefit of having an education kind of director as if we stay with the volunteers?
You're, you're always going to learn.
Okay. But wasn't that kind of, I'm, I'm asking a legitimate question to educate myself, because that seemed to be part of the problem is that you're not able to build the volunteer positions because it's, you don't have the edu, an education kind of facilitator supervises who are going to help facilitate that.
Right.
Does that become less more, or is it just as much of an issue if you move away from a volunteer organization and more into something like option A?
Option A still requires the volunteers.
Okay.
And you, you will still need a, an instructor.
So in your view, that position-
Even if you went option C, like full-time, full-time, any full-time service is going to have an instructor.
So in your view, that education sort of capacity is just as important in the current way the program is run and if any, with any A, B, or C option that the department came up with?
I would say it's more critical for where we're at now.
Okay.
But it is still vitally important for any of the other options. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So real quick, these other options, you can read why I didn't scope them out any more than I did. Option D, we can just continue providing the EMS service in the county. The only reason we have to provide it now is because you guys are being taxed for it. So if we don't tax for EMS, we don't have to provide the service, that's an option. Option E is to move the Department of Shiant County Hospital, which I'm sure Scott just loves that I put that in there. I'll just say from my conversations with the previous hospital administrator, what that does to the hospital books kind of wrecks the hospital even more.
There's a reason hospitals are moving away from that.
Yes, but that is an option that I have to throw out if I'm going to be honest.
We did in Goodland, like before the Goodland, their EMS was in the hospital. They went out. Isn't that better for the EMS? Like, aren't they better?
You know, when I worked in Manhattan, our EMS was under the hospital that worked really well.
But they're a critical access hospital. The issue comes with where our hospital is built, and it actually costs the county, in the end, it costs the county more dollars to have it under the hospital than it does to have it separate.
And that's what I saw.
Because of the way the hospital is made. And that's why Goodland moved away, because they're also a critical access hospital. It is cheaper for their county to do it outside of the hospital.
And then option F is to outsource the EMS department as a whole. There's private EMS companies that will come in and provide the service also.
On that, is there anybody currently wanting to do that? Private handled services?
I'll, I'll just say this, somebody go crunch the numbers with those folks. Holy hell. That's what I'm saying, would there actually be a private handled service that would want you to pay them? I mean, I'm not saying you're local.
But that's the key, they're a private company who is still going to be subsidized by, by money somehow to make it work.
And it's a for-profit company. You're in Shiant County.
And you don't employ the locals, I mean, that's it. But I, you see why I put it out there, I have to, to be honest, through the process. I mean, these are, these are three other options to take the shirt off of, so I'm done.
Oh, yeah. We need to, we're going to have to look at our budgets, of course, before we make any decisions. I was just wondering, if we run that, why we're trying to figure out what we can do, trying to get EMTs that are not certified to get recertified, maybe help fill the gap before we can figure out what we can do budget-wise? Because I think we're really tight, aren't we?
As far as our EMS budget?
Yeah. But we've got to have an EMS program. And a lot of you guys don't know, we, the original board, Dale Ernie and I, asked Reed to come to us, and he's done a really, really good job. And so, but we're going to need to look at this budget-wise, and it would be, it'd really need if we, if a lot of people would become recertified and maybe, you know.
You have to become recertified and pick up shifts.
Well, exactly, no good point.
But there's a difference.
And it's a problem.
You have to understand, to become recertified, for someone who's already lapsed at least two years, I think they have to come up with almost $1,500.
$1,500?
Yeah, it, it would be easier to retake the whole class. You don't just, you just don't recertify.
I understand, it's like more.
I don't know.
No, that's, that's if you're current.
Oh, okay.
If you're current.
And at that point, you still have to leave town to take the classes to keep your certification up.
How many EMTs do we have that let their certification lapse?
Oh, I did.
I mean, we've, we've had some that have retired, I don't think-
But, yeah. But, okay, let me rephrase that. How many people that would still do it if they had the chance to recert? If they compared to how many people would actually want to become an EMT?
To be honest, I can only think of your wife. I, you know, I-
Because firstly, if we had a class in town, I would go in a heartbeat. I started in Goodland when I was working in Goodland in the class, in the EMT class, but it affected my job in Goodland at the hospital. And that was still right there. And yes, as a volunteer, but I had to pretty much choose between my living or my class. And I had to choose my living. So if we had a class here in town, I would jump out in a heartbeat. So I'm all Puerto Rican instructor.
Yeah, I, I didn't know when I took directorship, how, I, I would say your instructor is equally as important as your director in these small-town services, and I didn't know that when I started. Or I probably would have done a different route, became an instructor.
Would it cost?
Have we ever looked at the possibility of checking the volunteer instructors?
Oh, there's none.
No. No. Why not? Oh, my God.
Are you going to do it?
Yeah.
Done for you.
Question for the commissioners, Reed. But, and this is coming from Cody, the pastor, not Cody, the chair. Because you look through these options, are any of these options doable with out-raising the class?
I can't honestly answer that without looking. I actually requested '06 to the current budget because of the approval of the five mills to the pool. We're going to have, we're going to have to really go over that since, I told people I would bring this out, since '06, we were 50.13 mills. Currently, we are 109.85.
Well, I guess the point of my question is, you got that Senate bill, however that ends up, I guess maybe the public will understand it, but there's, there's some legislation, I might even begin to try to explain it. But I just want the public to be aware, when we're talking about something like this, and such change, huge change in the budget, with this new Senate bill, whatever decision we make, we're kind of stuck with it because of taking away, they want to take away, these two gentlemen will power to raise budgets and stuff, you know, largely, I think over by eight, 10 percent, I think it is.
And Cody, the property tax lid didn't pass again, so the board is going to be limited in its ability to increase property taxes starting January 1 of 2017. Now, there are certain exceptions to that, that include some public safety components. But to be honest with you, it's super complex, and I haven't figured out all of the intricacies of that yet. But the reality is that the council legislature has removed some local control from your commissioners to be able to increase the mill levies without a vote to the public. And even with that, there's still limitations on the amount of the mill levy that can be increased, and that's starting January 1 of 2017.
I guess the point is, is what I'm trying to say, the public, and I'm including myself, the public means to decide what they want and work it through the republic system of having an elected official that represents you and lets you know your opinions today to make a decision, because we're about ready to go into budget time, and this may be the last opportunity they have to dramatically change the budget for the department without state oversight and state change. So I think it's just important everybody here, talk to their friends, and, you know, talk to their elected representative, whichever one it is up there, and whether you're for it or against it, you need to let them know so that they can make a informed decision, because this may be the last time they have, because it's not something we can put off. It's just, like I said, whether you're for or against it, I'm not telling those people, you need to let these two men know in a timely fashion, because when we go into budget, I think that's the last time, because this may be discussed a long time.
Without like going to the vote?
Without going to the vote.
Folks, before we adjourn, the chair has asked me to address the three options as to the total cost with benefits. Option B is $248,397.77, which equals 5.8 mills. Option B comes out to $373,659.32. This represents 8.725 mills. Mills, when they are applied to budgets, are only carried out to three decimals, they're not carried out any further. I think this is about $12 off Parker's page. Option C, rest of Reed mentioned that, at $70167.83. That represents 16.9 mills. If there's anybody that's interested in the annotated copies of the thing, I have a few extras here. I also have a spreadsheet produced by the accounting assessor, who starts with five mills, goes out to 12 mills. If you were to take five mills out to 12, you'll come up with 17, which will give you a picture of what it would cost you in dollars for your house, for your business, or if you were a farmer, it has 160 acres of dry land, 160 acres of irrigated, and 160 acres of pasture. So the figures are all, which represent what you would pay in $2,016. So I think we'll wrap it up with that.
I have a question about the benefits. Is that figuring health benefits for a single or for a family?
We assure the family. We assure families.
I actually, big one last comment. I think it's pretty clear that we've reached a juncture in the county where we have to decide how important it is for us to extend emergency services. I guess I am a little bit concerned when I hear comments of effect, well, you know, just let me die, that's fine. Well, I can tell you one thing, there's no way in hell I'm moving my family and remaining in St. Francis if the answer to my kids needing transport is, well, I guess they might just die. No. I'm not going to accept that risk for my family. If you personally accept that risk, great, but I don't think that's where we're going as a community, when we're not looking after our elderly. And let me be the first to say how sensitive I am, I know Reed is, everybody who's dependent on tax support here in the county, very, very sensitive to the tax burden levying on our community. It's significant. And why is that? It's because of our declining population. People who live in the city have a luxury of private businesses running very lucrative, profitable EMS services, because there's beating hearts that are taking advantage of these services. Obviously, in Shiant County, our population continues to decrease. And when you look at how we mitigate that, it's certainly not by cutting emergency services. We're not going to draw people back to our community and tell them, sorry, we're not going to have the ability to transport you if you need to make it to a critical facility. I think something else that needs recognized is the fact that our volunteers have been making this happen. You don't find this level of volunteerism outside of the city, or, excuse me, in the city. And quite frankly, you don't find this level of volunteerism anywhere other than Shiant County, America. So praise God, we have these faithful servants who have been carrying the torch, and yet, it obviously has reached a breaking point. It probably should have reached a breaking point several years ago, but to the sacrifice of most of these volunteers themselves, their families, it's continued. So when we look at the increased taxes, obviously, it's significant, and it's one more sign that the number of taxpayers in the county is decreasing, which makes it necessary for people to pay more to sustain a minimum level of services. I think that goes with the context of what we can do as a county to start drawing more people back, because that's ultimately the remedy for all of this. But I can tell you by minimizing our emergency services, that's not going to serve that effect certain. Another key point to keep in mind is the fact that if you're not able to go by ground, you get flown out. I would venture to say the majority of your health insurance plans do not cover a flight-for-life service. One flight-for-life service, one flight-for-flight transfer from our airport to Denver will be $17,000.
Minimum.
Yeah. So for those of you who may have to get flown out when you could have otherwise been taken by ground, let's say the perfect scenario happens, and we're stuck with the scenario where the only option to get you to the care that you need is to get flown out, and your insurance doesn't cover a flight-for-life, you're going to be confronted with a $17,000 bill. And they will collect that money, come on. These are entities from the city who run businesses who collect their money. And so this all ties into the bigger picture, and I know the commissioners are firmly aware of this, we are a heavily taxed county, no doubt about it, we're all sensitive to that. We have key services in this community that are struggling, schools enrollment is down, obviously, with a decreased population, the hospital census follows those trajectories. And we have an EMS service who has for far too long taken advantage of an unbelievable volunteer force. So I think the broad point, and obviously, again, I don't know if the commissioners appreciate this, is finding a cost-effective way to keep emergency services going, because I don't think anyone in here is arguing that considering ending EMS in Shiant County is a viable option. And if you do, then, you know, God bless you for your opinion, but I think that's certainly not even opposed to the majority. So I certainly appreciate, this is the first time that I had seen the mill levies in association with various options. Obviously, Reed did his homework, the commissioners did a very good job doing their homework. You know, I pay bills like everybody else, of course, but I'm on option A, okay, the cheapest option. But, and it sounds like there may be ways to maybe carve some of this down in very minimal fashion, but I hope collectively we can agree, and I hope, you know, the commissioners fully appreciate the fact that under no circumstances should emergency services here be allowed to end, because, and under no circumstance should we continue just to keep the service running on the backs of a very, very few medical volunteers. So again, I definitely appreciate the EMS program, and the hospital certainly gives the majority of its ER patients to do their transfer services, again, generates revenue for a facility that is supported by taxpayers. So the two main points are, one, we are very sensitive, you know, I know Reed is, I certainly am, I know Mr. Schultz is to the tax burden being levied on taxpayers. But two, with a declining population, there are some inevitabilities that we're going to have to face collectively and recognize if some of these key functions of a populace go away, it's going to be downward spiral. There's no way in heck they're going to attract young families to come back to this community. No way.
At the hospital, that employee, how bad would the hospital be affected if the EMS wasn't around? Like, would, as an aide, I wouldn't know, I'd go out and take it, right? And as not only a hospital employee, but a mother of two young boys, there is no way I would stay here if we did not have an EMS service. Not only, I mean, why would I stay here? And my husband is here, and I know a lot of our family would not stay here, because why would we stay somewhere that if there's emergency, no one would be there to take care of us?
Reed, do you have anything else? No, I, I think I've said a plenty. Does anybody else have anything to say? I know we're going to have to look at the budget, see where we're at, and what kind of a timetable are, can you even estimate, or will we get back together again when you look at these numbers, or?
I, I mean, I don't know, it's just from what Scott brought, I mean, I've got five little ones that hunt trees and do all kinds of dangerous things, and Reed isn't taking the majority of the calls starting June. I want to know who's going to be covering that ambulance starting in June, because most of my conciliaries have to bring a phone. So I kind of, I kind of want, yeah, this waiting pool, I, I want to know who's going to be covering the shifts starting the big wedding.
The question would have to be done by, what, August 24th? But we have to have it done actually before the, for the accounts to-
The Board of Commissioners is actually getting, entering their budget time about June 1st, is when all the, I will create out reports for all the budgets, about departments of what they've spent, they will, I will compile that information, they will start meeting and drafting that budget for next year. We'll have to work with our auditor on that. Usually about August 1st, it becomes a little more finalized. They set a budgetary to where the public is welcome to come in to their meeting, and if there's any discussion on the way they have set the budget, it can be voiced at that time. Hopefully, by August the 25th, that budget for next year is finalized with all departments, not just EMS.
So you're looking at three months of Reed not covering call before we can even think about hiring?
No, that's, that's for 2007.
Right.
And just to let everybody know how it works by state statute, the ambulance service is owned by the Board of Commissioners collectively, so they are the owners of the ambulance. They appoint me to carry out the tasks of being the director. So they, they have a statutory requirement as taxing the taxpayers to provide that coverage.
We have to look at the budget and see if we need to transfer, that's what I'm getting at. It's, we can budget for it next year, that's what I decided to do, but we have to, there's, we have to have the ambulance service, I mean, there's no question about that. It's just we've got to figure out what we can do. And I think encourage everybody to reach, reach out to your commissioner. I'm north of, south of Main Street, Edford City, it's north of Main Street. Come and talk to us, call and stop by, let us know. I know for my, my, I guess I'm a little partial because my wife is an EMT, but I want to know, I want people's input on this, so.
Would it be fair going forward, I, just from the temperature of the whole room that I, I see, that we would see if there would be any of the current volunteers interested in maybe any of that option A? Or is that even, if you don't, I mean, if you even go there to see if we have any local interest in that?
If you ask, if there's any mills, you know, I hope we get over another meeting and, and chill. That'll give us a start. I mean, if you want to go and talk to people and see if you can get some, if you can cover it, that's what you're asking.
I think it would end with that.
Yeah, I mean, because what are we going to do then first? If we're waiting till June or middle of June, what are we doing June 1st?
Well, maybe we need to try to get together again. That would be my only plan. When, when, when we're sure.
But I think here's the problem that I'm hearing a disconnect between practicality of the law, and unfortunately, there's often a disconnect between those two things. The budget for this year is the budget for this year. So solving the problem from June 1 on is not this.
You're right.
So solving the problem from June 1 on is not this. This is for the budget for next year, which the session ended. So I think the legal reality is, one, the commissioners are in a situation, they have to make a policy decision for which option they want for budget year 2017. And then, two, what within the budget addresses the concerns identified by Reed and the EMS department to solve the problems that are occurring right now.
June, or December.
Yeah, I feel like, I just want to, because I'm kind of hearing people mixing those two things up, and unfortunately, and I'm unfortunately part of the law, so I own this, I think there's huge disconnect between the reality that a community faces and the legal parameters under which you can address that. And ultimately, these plans have nothing to do with what the commissioners have to do from June on, June 1 onward.
The money generated by the transfers that are just going into the general fund is not part of EMS's budget.
No, that goes into general funds.
All of our income goes back to the general fund.
But I'm saying, I guess the, the income, if we're looking at it possibly going up, even with option A, if you've got more people on or whatever, where's the money going anyway into the general fund?
It goes into the general fund.
Well, what I'm saying, why?
Well, if you only, if you meant that, you would look at the budget. I mean, I think, I think that's the thing, is the commissioners take the amount of money that comes in, they split it up between the departments. 2016 budget has already been determined, anyone can go request that public information to see how it's, it's split up. And ultimately, I just, I want to make sure everyone in this room, including the commissioners, are clear that this is for the future. The problem that is going to face EMS department from June 1 onward is not this, that's a separate problem that would have to be addressed within the budget as it currently exists. And I just wanted to make sure, I have heard a few different community members say different things that may be concerned, that maybe that distinction wasn't...
Yes, and as EMS department, I mean, I see what you're saying, but these are what we came up for June 1st. Does that make sense?
Yes, but it's not going to be able to be activated.
Should we not be able to stay with the same system until we get this to the year of 2016?
And I think what they're going to say is, it's a personnel problem for the rest of this year. It's not a money problem. Money for '16 has been allocated, so this budget's set. With Reed's departure, just for the short term, it's a personnel problem, not a funding problem. Next year, as we look at these various options, is when it becomes a funding issue, not a personnel issue, so.
Because the problem is with the budget as it currently exists, there is not room in the budget for any of these options from June 1 onwards because the 2016 budget has already been adopted. So addressing those personnel and community safety issues has to be addressed within the budget that has already been adopted by the commissioners.
And I guess does that budget include any slush funds, emergency funds, et cetera? I know on the other counties that I, they do have such funds. And I don't even know what they can be used for, but usually you budget some place in there additionally.
And this is ultimately going to be policy considerations for more to figure out within the current budget.
But do you have those?
They're going to have to go to shift bids, is what it's going to have to go to, correct?
Well, we roughly know from experience what that costs. So, I mean, you're right, it's a personnel issue, but it's a personnel issue with a pretty big price tag. But that price tag has to remain within the budget that's already been allocated. Right, right. And this, I guess, Mike, you know, we talked about fat in the budget, is there fat in this budget? I don't know.
Why not just bring in a new director? Are you a new director or are you a stand-up?
He's still going to be the director, he's just not going to be called.
Because no one will sign up for the job that Reed does. Reed has sacrificed his health and his family and the hours he's put in, there is no one in this room. And if you would do the job Reed has been doing for the hours he's putting in, stand up. If you would be willing to do that job, stand up. That's why we can't just replace Reed. There aside, none of us who would do it.
The whole thing will be, you'll be doing the same thing you did in March from June until December right now, according to the budget. You guys are going to have to take up his calls that he had to take. I mean, so it's going to be your commitment that's going on.
That's another 25% work because that was only three weeks out of the board.
Right, right. So see, they have to have, they're making a commitment to our community right now as of June 1st for Reed. The whole group will be doing it.
That's a problem. There's only so much more we have physically.
Exactly. We do have an EMT coming back for the summer that's going to fill the summer hours. So that's going to be a great help. And I'm just curious, how many in here raise your hands that would be interested in certifying as an EMT?
Two.
Three.
Four.
Great.
Okay, and how many, the other thing would be then, you have to think of the number of EMTs that may not recertify it to end of this year or next year. So are we going to gain four and lose four and be right back to four?
I believe we have two.
That's usually what we do. We gain, we lose, we gain, we lose, so.
And if we can pull this all together, you know, I'll be teaching a class the fall of 2017, so it'll take me that long to get certified, but that's, that's the answer to the problem I face here.
The only option that we can do as of June 1st is if we have EMTs that are still certified that aren't running and can help cover it, to fix the solution from June to the new year, what is the best?
I guess, I guess the question might have, with that March, with shift, we're not, every month's not going to be that way, right? I mean, I guess I'm trying to, trying to grasp what you mean. June might be different because March may have been busy with wrestling tournaments and hard to deal. So June may be low and you might not have to shift a bit much.
Right.
And July might be high because everybody's on vacation. You don't, it's, it's hard to budget that and understand that.
And summer's usually harder to hold, you know?
That's what I'm saying. It's hard to go and say March is a snapshot of what's going to happen after the first because, you know, we don't...
It's the only thing we have to this point, you know what I mean? Whether it's accurate snapshot or not, we'll find out in the future, I guess.
How long is the EMR class? With more EMRs though? Not really?
We did the EMR class once. It's really the difference between about 20 or 30 class hours. And for the limitation of scope, to be honest, it's really not worth it, but we came back and decided.
My only, like, thought, because I don't know, my only thought was like, if we could scrounge around in the EMR class, would that help get us through next June, while you're not taking the call?
By the time we got the class done, I met everybody who was in there. That's the problem. And you got us on the table.
And just being on the front lines, just as they roll into the emergency, we're just obviously seconds down. These guys, you can't just go, let's just find an EMS center somewhere. So we get them from Goodland, Rainy, they don't know our facilities, their equipment, they can plug right in and go. We can chalk you right away off their equipment. These guys know us, we know them. It's so awesome having local people that we've worked with for 20 years. You just, that's what you pay for.
And I would say the professionalism of these guys compared to some of the crews that come in from out of the county is above and beyond. I would say one of our crews, over a neighboring county, they're in there.
And that's great to know because those neighboring counties are probably full-time services and we're just the volunteers.
So I just want to make another point to Scott's point real quick. So we're going to deal with June forward, right? At some point, that's how you guys are going to do it. So how about with this? I just want to re-clarify when the decision is going to be made about this and what the community can do to talk about this, or call the commissioners and let them know what we think. Because if I'm right, that's what's going to make the decision, us talking to the commissioners, and then they decide on whether or not it's going to be in the budget next year? Which, which option will be in the budget? Is that right?
Well, we ultimately decide.
Or is it put to a vote? I'm not...
We have two choices. We can make a decision on a single option, or we can make a decision and make a motion and do a resolution and put it on the ballot for the residents of the county to vote on it. Those are the only two options that we have. The option of funding this for this year is not viable because we have an established budget like the county attorney just explained.
Yes, sir, and I'm not talking about this year. I'm just concerned about how we're going to make our decision about this for next year, and how we can get engaged and involved, and if we want to put it to a vote, or if it's just you guys, who makes that decision? On whether it's to a vote or you just make the decision? How do we?
They make that decision.
You guys make the decision on whether or not it's supposed to a vote? And you make the decision based off the input from the community?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
That's what we would prefer.
Okay, all right. So, community input, right? That's what it's got to be. We want to know if we want to have a voice on this, like the sheriff was saying, like Scott was saying, right? We really want a voice. It needs to be put, in my opinion, a vote is what we need to do. That's just my opinion.
So, this is not for June. What options do we have for June within our budget? Because I feel like that should be our priority because June is just next month.
The option A puts out to $20,699.40 a month, and I don't know what the bidding's going to cost.
Like, what I'm asking is, besides these options, since from what I've gathered, these are not an option that we can have for June, what do you guys suggest are other options? Since these are financially not available, what are our other options to do to cover from June to December?
Reed, how many EMTs are out there that are not running call or service right now that are still licensed? These EMTs?
It wasn't me.
No, me! Is she the only one?
No.
No, I would think.
So to me, that would be going back to your EMTs that are licensed and asking them to help pick up the slack until we can...
But they're not running for a reason right now.
I understand that.
Because like, Nella, that I mean, Nella's not running because she now has a full-time job. And a garden, yeah, and a garden friend.
I have a full-time job, so I can run.
And do you guys realize that when we do volunteer and we work a full-time job, that a lot of times we're working eight to five or seven to seven? I will go on to transfer sometimes, won't get home till 3:00 AM in the morning, and then I still am expected to be back at work that next morning at 7:00 AM. I mean, are those sacrifices that people are willing to make?
So no doubt that our EMS volunteers are amazing, and we don't want it to hurt us from this. If anyone has any suggestions or what we can do from June to December, is a major non-option?
Well, the thing is, I mean, we only have to have two volunteers to cover the town. So if you have one insane and one hurt, you have, just have to understand those times, the hardship, the burden that's here. We would have to...
And I, I understand that.
It's just...
You know, I, I can't shut up, I, for the community, just offer up any opinion of the emergency rate of money.
No, I think that's exactly the point. The point is, is that keep, keep running volunteers, let's go. And we just ride on the gas.
My question's running.
No, they're just going to have to, they're just going to have to start hard like they have been doing, except for now we don't have three women, we have four, right? And maybe like, we try out.